Good evening, everyone. It is 7:15 PM on Wednesday, October 12th, 2022. My name is Katie Hetchman, and I now open the Committee of the Whole, and we'll start with the roll call. Ellis?
Here.
Francie?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Hetchman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Gertini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Seedorf?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Thank you. And we did have a guest speaker tonight from the Grace Harbor Conservation District. However, we're going to need to reschedule with them due to a timing conflict. So I will move on to Department head reports. So are there any updates from our department heads? Ready.
All right. On the agenda tonight, I have three, well, I have two items, and then hopefully Mayor Shave's got his list for appointments for the Lodging Tax Committee. Okay, great. So I've got the report coming from the Finance Committee, and I won't steal Finance Chair Ellis's thunder, but I know there'll be some input regarding the discussion on the request to hire a firm to perform the structural analysis and then another firm to perform the AHERA survey, which is hazardous. And then tonight, we have the first public hearing on the Parks and Recreation 2023-2028 Comprehensive Plan. So this is an opportunity for the public to provide input on our, on your parks, on our recreation programs, park improvements, and maintenance to our parks. This is important. We want to hear from the community. We want to hear the good. We want to hear the bad. If there's things that we need to have or things that we're not doing that we should be doing, we, we won't know that unless you provide us that input. So this is important. So we want to hear from the community. If you're not able to be here tonight, email me, and I'll be sure to include that in our report. And then the mayor tonight will have the appointment to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. The terms do end this year. The terms are dictated by state law. We have to have two members on the committee that pay into the fund. So that's two that operate lodging establishments and two that receive funds. So there has to be two organizations that have received grant funds in the past. So we've got Danny Bacon, who represents our Aberdeen, Bobby McCracken, who represents the Downtown Aberdeen Association, and then we have two representatives from Best Western Plus. Highlight a few projects that we've completed this summer. We have the pickleball courts now. I'm real excited about that, and we're thankful that the community foundation gave us the grant to do that. That's at Pioneer Park in South Aberdeen, right off of Cushing Street. We're still working on the Little League Field remodel project, but to date, we use funds to replace the fencing in the outfield. And then Little League raised the money to replace the scoreboard. And we've installed the fencing at Garley Park, which is in the lower left-hand corner photo. That provides a buffer between the neighbor's house and the park. We've got, all the turf has now been disposed from the Grace Harbor Historical Seaport, and the street sweeper went through and cleaned up all the sand that was left over. So yay, that is done. We installed the new seesaw at Sandman Playground. We made some improvements to the disc golf course. We put in new signs and repainted all the baskets. Along the East Aberdeen Trail, specifically down by Walmart and the Compass Rose, staff, including myself, went out and pruned and trimmed all the overgrown landscaping. And we've got some photos in the next slide. And we've got the exterior of the log pavilion that was cleaned. That needs to be done on an annual basis. I wish I had some before photos. I always kick myself. So these are just some after photos. We trimmed down all of the shrubs, so they're only about 12 inches tall. Everything looks kind of brown right now because obviously it hasn't rained too much lately. But I know that Walmart is very appreciative of this, as well as law enforcement. This has improved that area, gives visibility. The fishermen have talked to staff about how much they appreciate the improvements because now they can see their vehicles when they're parked, and they feel a lot safer there. So that was much needed and is finally completed. And I just, last thing is, we started a cornhole league this year. We have a new recreation supervisor, and he's got a lot of good ideas. And we had 16 teams sign up. That's, that's a lot of teams for the first time running a division. We have a waiting list of people that want to participate as well. So we've got two divisions. We've got the recreational division and the competitive division. And the report that I've received is that some of the teams in the competitive division now realize they're actually recreational. All that I have. Thank you.
And that report is on the web, city website?
The.
This, yeah.
Yes.
And it's, it's well worth reading.
So we, yep, so we have the existing comprehensive report that is on the website. And so what we're looking for is input on what you would like to see included in the new report. And then, once the final draft of the new report is completed, that will be provided to the council and the public for review before it's adopted. Yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other updates from department heads? Seeing none, I'll open up to council members. Any council members have non-standing committee reports? I'm going to start behind me this time.
Is there a mayor's report?
Oh, I skipped the mayor. We'll come back.
That's fine.
Okay.
I have the report. Nobody else does, so. On October 4th, I attended the museum board meeting, and we do have an item on the agenda this evening to move forward with some pretty important analysis that we need in order to determine what needs to be done to the current building for the future use of the museum. And the board's quite anxious to see that happen so we can move forward. Also, the Downtown Aberdeen Association is, along with the Aberdeen Parks and Rec and Moyer Multimedia, helping with the Halloween Spectacular, which is going to be held on Saturday, October 29th, from 12 to 2. This will take place during the downtown treating, trick-or-treating event. And Rick Moyer will be taking pictures, and they will be posted, and there will be a costume contest, very well received in past years, and we're really looking forward to it. So the pictures will be happening at 202 South K Street in Aberdeen, so hoping that people will participate in that. Thank you.
Any other updates from council members? Mayor Shave, I apologize for the report. Oh, I can't. Go ahead, Councilperson Ellis.
Thank you very much. Yes, I went on a really informative tour of the Seaport Hazardous Waste Cleanup Site, led by the Chehalis Riverkeeper and Seaport Staff. I also attended a homeless committee meeting and the museum board committee meeting. And then, coming up, the Seaport has a really fun event. On October 22nd at 5:30, there's a Haunted Castle Murder Mystery Evening, where a spooky night of dinner, dancing, and fun. And folks can go to the Seaport website for more information on that. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council members? Okay, Mayor Shave. Third time's a charm.
Well, I'd like to introduce to everybody the first-ever Aberdeen City Administrator, Ruth Clements, sitting here at my right. First time we've ever had a city administrator. And the first couple of weeks that she's been here, she's just stood out spectacularly. I think we made a great decision. Now I'm really embarrassing her. But I just kind of let her feel things out for the first couple of weeks and kind of get used to what it looks like around here. But she's dug right in and is right down to business already. So I really want to welcome you to the city of Aberdeen. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Shave. I think we made it through the Committee of the Whole agenda, so I will adjourn the Committee of the Whole and hand it back over to you.
Thank you. This is Mayor Shave. It's Wednesday, October 12th, 2022, at 7:26 PM, and I will call the Aberdeen City Council Meeting to order. First item is roll call. Deputy City Clerk, will you take roll call, please?
Ellis?
Here via Zoom.
Francie?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Hetchman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Gertini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Seedorf?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the flag salute. Do we have somebody in the audience that leads us in the flag salute? Ms. Morrison, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Mayor Shave, I move we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Motion was made and seconded to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor Shave, I have just one thing to clarify, and the executive session should be listed, I believe, as a closed session.
Okay.
Just so that everyone's aware of that.
Finance Committee, Committee Chair report from Councilmember Ellis.
Let's call a public comment first.
Oh. I did miss it. Sorry. Public comments. This is a time when anyone from the public can come up to the podium, give your name and your board, if you know, and speak on anything that's on the agenda.
There is a separate time for parks.
If you want to give testimony for the parks' public hearing, then there's an actual public hearing that's going to take place. But you're welcome to speak now. It just won't be taken as like the formal testimony for it.
I will probably.
Okay, okay.
When you pointed to me, I just said, okay.
Hi.
I'm John Shaw. I live at 819 Hillcrest. I'm in Ward 6. I'd like to take a minute as the museum board chair to address what we feel is the importance of the item before the council this evening and clarify a couple of things. I, I think there's a lot of discussion that's rotating around the museum and where everybody is at from the museum board perspective. The ask that's before you tonight is about gaining information and getting information in a professional manner that can really help guide us on the cost to deal with the envelope of the building that we are in now at this new building. To clarify another point, you know, a year ago, a little over a year ago, in July 2021, the mayor advised us as the board that the city was not prepared to go forward with the museum as a new building and a new location. I had a chance to talk to Pete directly that we would accept that as a discussion, and we would work accordingly. The museum board has worked during the last year, pushed on the issue of housing the collection in a city-owned building. Right now, we're pushing on probably a loaded $60,000 a year spend where we're keeping the collection. We want to get it housed, our, our, from the museum board. We wanted to house the collection. That was it, in a city-owned building. Then the discussion morphed into discussions of the cost of developing the building, cost of doing a whole lot of other things. That didn't really come from the museum board. The museum board, unlike the Museum Now discussion, is a Plan Now discussion. This is a piece of the puzzle. The city doesn't have the ability to know professionally exactly what the, all the needs of that building are going to be. And we've been encouraged. We've had architects and other people step up. This is part of professional services on structural and environmental that will allow us to finish the plan to move the collection into the building. Beyond that, we see it as a planning process. Our, our initial look on what it'll take to deal with the envelope of the building so that it can house the collection is not a big scary number. It's, it's a manageable number. Also, once we get the collection housed, we can then begin developing other funding sources. There's nobody that has grant programs available to an unhoused collection. And that's one of the things that creates a problem for the board. It is not able to go out and develop those things because we're in a month-to-month unhoused situation. So the piece of puzzle tonight is very important because it's part of us knowing what costs will really be on that building. Everything else has been a guess. All the numbers to date, there are some things we know. This is a piece of the puzzle. We need to know what we're really going to be looking at to develop the envelope of that building. Now, that's basically what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Finance Committee. Committee Chair report from Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee met tonight, and we have one report on the agenda. I'd like to start by recommending the approval of expenditures.
I second that.
Motion was made and seconded to approve the payroll and expenditures. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Motion to approve accounts payable in the total amount of $1,299,143.46 and payroll in the total amount of $835,789.96. Check numbers 25624 through 25626, 79058 through 79227, and wires 1397 through 1400. Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Hetchman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Gertini?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Seedorf?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion approved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And then we have a report from Finance and the Parks Director recommending that the city council authorize the Parks Director to hire a firm to perform the structural analysis and a firm to perform the AHERA survey of 118 West Wishka Street for an amount not to exceed $15,000. I move we adopt this report.
I second.
Motion was made, seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? I have a point of clarification, and like me, is that 15,000 per firm, per study, or total aggregate?
Total.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I would like to have it in writing that this is the only building that we're looking at for the museum before we invest $15,000 into a study. And then I would also like clarification on that if any repairs need to be done, it comes out of our general fund according to the museum board. I would like to know what that looks like. I, I think that this is premature. We, we need this in writing. We need a solid foundation to rely on.
We're not looking at another location any further. And it says in the report, this is coming out of the 102 fund.
125.
Or 125, I'm sorry. Stacy just fell over. Sorry.
And future expenses?
I mean, future expenses can be decided later. At this point, the board is just looking for an idea of what it's going to take to get this building, the envelope, as they call it, in place so they have an idea of what it's going to take. We can't do anything more without these structural analysis. We're trying to get the collection moved into a permanent location so we can work on it and save the city money in other, other areas, places.
I was encouraged to hear, and I appreciated, Mr. Shaw, that if the museum collection is permanently housed, that provides an avenue or a vehicle towards applying for grants and hopefully obtaining some. I was unaware of that, and I think that's a really valuable and significant aspect of this, so.
Any other discussion?
Mayor.
Does somebody have? Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. That is all there is from the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works Committee. Committee Chair report, Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, 4 o'clock, Public Works met, and despite a brief few minutes of disappointment in the bottom of the ninth, we were able to have a pretty good meeting. We welcomed Ruth Clements to our meeting, and thank you for attending. It was a relatively short agenda, so we had an opportunity to talk about lots of our projects that are going on. I'll leave that for, there's some, some very interesting projects that we'll, hopefully we'll be hearing about soon. That said, I'll move down to Reports and Communications. We have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Committee recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to adopt the public participation plan as part of our Shoreline Master Program update. I will read out this report.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ellis.
Um, yes, I wanted to recommend that the Chehalis Riverkeeper be added as, as one of the significant stakeholders.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellis. I don't quite know what to do with that since this is the first time hearing of that or how our director, Scott, would, would work on it. And I guess I don't know enough to second your recommendation. Sorry.
What was the name again of who you're recommending?
It's the Chehalis River, Riverkeeper.
I never heard of them.
It's an organization that monitors the health of, of the Chehalis and its tributaries. And they've been really active and putting on a number of good tours locally of different sites that are involved in cleanup.
Lisa Scott, did you have a comment?
Yes, I will make sure to forward that information on to the consultant who is scheduling all of the meetings and the public participation so they can include them in the mailing list.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, that's everything for the phone calls.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Safety Committee Chair report from Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Shave. Our committee met this evening at 6:30 PM, and I will report from the Police Department first. On the personnel side, both lateral applicants have been hired. Officer Gabe Tarnowski starts October 21, and Officer Jacob Shaw starts on October 25. We have one entry-level candidate with a conditional offer, and background has started on him. With PSO Rudenbaugh transitioning to patrol on November 15, we will be three officers down with a fourth retiring in the next three months. We also have a conditional for PSO, and the background has started for him as well. We have an additional eight applicants for police officer that will move to written testing phase in the next two weeks. So hopefully soon, we will have a full staff. The activity report for the past 30 days for the Aberdeen Police Department was a total of 2,750 calls. That's 91 calls per day. Year-to-date, this is still tracking at 11% above last year's call load. 30% of all 911 calls in Grace Harbor County are for the Aberdeen Police Department, so they're keeping very, very busy. Good news from KCPQ's Channel 13 from Seattle. It's donating a command post van for department use. It is a used mobile satellite van. They are retiring. And the Aberdeen Police Department will picking this up soon as, as soon as the legal agreement is signed off. Moving on to the City of Aberdeen Fire Department. We do have one agenda item this evening for the purchase of a new ambulance, which is a budgeted item. Moving on to the Public Safety Committee report. The call statistics for September were a total of, I didn't put my glasses on, 491 calls, year-to-date, 4,615, which is 2% over last year. And last year broke the record, so we're still staying very busy there as well. Cosmopolis Fire Department calls were a total of 15 for the month of September, with three of those being fire-related. October is Fire Safety Month, and the goal is to provide children with take-home handouts to share with their families. They have partnered with State Farm and Domino's, and with their participant, participant partnerships, 700 fire safety packets have been donated. And they've been having a lot of fun all week, reaching out into different schools and working with families for fire safety. October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and on the weekends, the Aberdeen firefighters will be wearing pink shirts to support this important issue. From the Fire Service Specialist Report, for the month of September, there were five home visits with seven smoke alarms installed. Also reached out to 11 public service assistants for referrals. Three were referred to adult protective services, and three were patient follow-ups to coordinate care. And those are the reports from the two departments. So I move on to our report for the agenda. We have a report from Public Safety and the interim fire chief recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the ambulance proposal with Braun Northwest, Inc. to build a 2023 Ford ambulance at the rate of $237,270 plus tax. I move we adopt this report.
My second.
Motion was made, seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ellis.
Yeah, I was just looking over the, the spec sheet for the new ambulance and was curious as to why the boxes weren't checked that would save us a bit of money on this. I think one of the boxes was if we were to get this new vehicle with the 2022 something or rather, instead of the 2023, we'd save some money on that and maybe get it sooner.
Let your interim chief address that.
Yes, so we are going to take advantage of the first item on that is going.
is going with a chassis that is actually on order, that they've put a sticky note on our name for that chassis, so we'll be able to realize those savings there. That chassis is a different color, so they'll have to paint it in the wash. It'll come out to roughly, just shy of $1,000 savings to that figure. The other additional item we're going to have to look at, I need to get with one of our internal people and verify if that is something that we can change to reduce. I believe that's 350 or so dollars.
Thank you.
If possible, we will, for sure.
Thanks, Dave. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Your defense is from Public Safety. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, reading or hearing how busy the police, firefighters are, I think everybody should send them cookies in care of the mayor's office, 300 East Wishcom. I'll make sure they get some. Moving on to special agenda items.
Tonight, we have a public hearing on the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Motion was made seconded to open the public hearing. Any discussion? We didn't vote on it yet. Excuse me, excuse me. Hold on one second. The council didn't approve the opening of the public hearing. We just have to be, go through the motions here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now the public hearing is open.
My name is Jeff Wong. I'm Robert Gray Gobard. I have no idea which ward that is. Free? Okay, very good, thank you. And I just wanted to make some comments about the Parks and Rec. And first thing I want to do is to express my appreciation for the rapid response of the Parks and Rec Department after graffiti vandalism last Friday at San Dan Park. The crew erased any trace of the spray paint within two hours. And I know this is common, but I really do appreciate that. Just nasty.
It's common. City gets right on it all the time.
They're fast. They're fast. Okay. Now, let's see now. Pickleball, I think you've already addressed that. Because the financial barrier to entry is low, with gear for two players under $20, and four players under $40, and the learning curve is really shallow, I think it's going to become unpopular. And I would like to hear the Parks and Rec consider more venues for pickleball, more courts, and specifically San Dan Park, because I noticed that many other venues in, say, Thurston County also have pickleball courts right next to the tennis courts. And that would be really a valuable place to put them, because people can bring paddles for either sport, and if the pickleball courts are full, they can go play tennis, okay? And I have noticed that the people at the, some people have taken to the tennis courts and drawn in chalk pickleball lines. And so maybe a pickleball court. Let's see. Third, yes, third, third item. We, as tennis players, appreciate the recent pressure washing of the grime and grue on the San Dan Tennis Court surface. And I'd like to point out, though, that the cleaning eroded the surface. The drain channel under the nets, each of the courts has a drain channel, has a half-inch-deep layer of court-colored sludge. Okay, so pieces of court surface are missing from the court. And I would submit that the pressure used to wash was maybe excessive, and the department might research less traumatic cleaning methods. An acquaintance mentioned that he had never seen or heard of court being pressure washed. He probably hasn't heard of it yet. And he also mentioned that a cleaning solution and a push broom did the job in all the pains that he'd observed. Related to that is tennis court surfacing. I only know the history of resurfacing back to 2014 from a Daily World online story of September 2018. Story says the court was done that year and in 2014. And the last comment in the story comes from the director. "We hope the community enjoys these beautiful tennis courts for many years to come." And the courts are really, the court is playable, okay? It exhibits multiple cracks, some of which exceed one-half inch width, with grass and other weeds growing in them or trying to grow in them. One of my tennis players, I think, dribbles a little roundup or something like that on them. I don't know what he does. But anyways, after a few days of rain and a couple of dry days, some of the cracks were weak water. And Mr. Bacon indicated that measures are, will be undertaken to alleviate that problem. But I think that water comes from the hill above the courts. And I noticed that the bulkhead on the north end of the courts has little drain holes, about six or eight of them, near the floor. And in the past, I would think that maybe with initial construction, there was a drainage system that would maybe prevented water from pushing up under the court. Maybe somebody smarter than me needs to look at this. I think somebody is. There's plenty of people like that. And maybe consider drainage before resurfacing. The definition of many years to come, I don't, I think, should exceed four years. Okay? And then, now I have a request. It is for a tennis court hitting wall. Tennis players will come to the court without a partner and want to hit against the wall. The north wall is about ten feet tall, but only seven and a half feet is solid. Chain link fencing continues to the, to about the rest of that ten feet. And that isn't tall enough, the solid part isn't tall enough to allow players to develop skills to help them enjoy the game better. And they end up with a lot of frustration, because the balls hit the chain link fence, and they don't bounce back, or they go over the fence and all that business. Woodruff Park in Olympia has a hitting wall that's priced at $1,700. Lion Park in Olympia has a hitting wall made of painted plywood, and I would guess that would probably cost about maybe $200 in interior or less, or something like that. It's just sheets of plywood. And I would like to propose some kind of wall for hitting at San Dan's Park Courts, either type, the $1,700 model or the whatever, $200 model. I have ideas for a wall. If somebody wants suggestions, I'm happy to offer them. I think community members have given money to resurface the courts, and I think community members will be, will, would like to contribute something for a hitting wall. So something that's maybe nine feet high or something like that would be very useful. Nine feet high, maybe, I don't know, sixteen feet wide or something like that, or eight feet wide. Okay, let's see now. Six, because of the elevation of the courts above the street, players at the north end of the courts experience significant backlighting issues. The ball disappears because of the sky. It just disappears because the sky is so bright. And they only see the ball once it comes across the net. And none of us have been injured by a fast-moving ball, because none of us hits it that hard. But it would be really conducive to more, the greater pleasure playing. We've got a windscreen or something like that, a colored windscreen. And one of my tennis friends has a colored, dark-colored windscreen that he would like to donate to the city if the park will install it. And only a few sections of the fencing cause the problems, probably about four sections on each court. Because after that, you're just not looking, you've got trees that cut out the sky. The sky is the problem, okay? Same thing. Community members will donate money for, to pay for screen as necessary. That's it. Questions? Thank you.
Hi there. Antara from Ward 4. And the Parks and Rec, that is a favorite of mine. Thank you for bringing this up, because I see the parks is just a highlight that Aberdeen could have along the waterway. You really need to view the waterway as an asset to the town. And I really, I just went to Astoria and did the 10K there. I think there was 3,500 people. We ran over the bridge. And that is a big source of income for towns, when all these runners come into town and they're shopping, and they're checking out the town. We need to have something like that, and I hope we can get something organized like that in the future. If we do have a water, a promenade, I call it a promenade along the water. Like Tacoma has a beautiful promenade too, and it could be built out in the water on the piers. That would be awesome. And then we visited Long Beach, and they have the planks that walks up along, kind of like, well, no, I guess they don't, but the planks that you walk along as a path also, and that could be for biking and jogging and walking, and just to encourage the whole town to get into fitness. That will lift the spirits of people if they have something to do, you know, year-round. And we, and we, if we could get something indoors and outdoors year-round, and a pamphlet, so kids and adults know what kind of activities they can do. Including, we need a marina. Why don't we have a marina on the water? And where is it? Driving up Hood, Hood Canal, the kids have sailing and boating classes. Why don't we have sailing and boating? I mean, they need to learn to be safe around the water here. So there's some exciting things we can develop around the water. And another thing for the East Aberdeen Trail, like, I really, I know it's on the east side of Aberdeen, but I don't know where it is, and I'm a jogger. I don't know where to go. So maybe if I had a pamphlet, I could find it. And sometimes it is hard to find trails, even like in Gig Harbor, they have a trail map, but it's hard to figure out where it's at. Let me see, in the city website, what is this? So that's it. I was looking at this survey. The survey's excellent, but I don't think people know about it. I mean, I was here last meeting. I never heard about this. I don't know how the people are getting the information. So anything we can do to promote the waterway, build a park, and brainstorm? Don't have any closed ideas. We don't need to be depending on grant money all the time. There could be trust money coming, and keep your mind and ideas open. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public have something on this?
I move we close the public hearing.
Motion is made seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed.
And next, we have some appointments, and I'll hand those over to you.
Thank you. I'd like to have somebody motion to nominate Danny Bacon, Bobby McCracken, and Jackie Elsos, and Lisa Blanchard for the Lodging Tax Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to approve these appointments. Any discussion?
I need to recovers myself because of conflict of interest.
Thank you.
It says on here the term is ending end of this year.
That's correct.
So we're appointing them for just another month and a half?
Yes, and we'll do the same thing next year as we did last year.
That's interesting.
They provide input, yeah, to the Lodging Tax Advisory Funds of the city.
They'll be, their task will be completed by the end of the year.
All right. Learned something new today.
Any other discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The appointments have been approved. And public comments on anything. Come up to the podium, three minutes. State your name and ward. Anything you want to talk about to the council. Okay. Seeing none. Move to City Council comments. Councilmember Ross.
I would just like to thank the council for approving the assessments that we ask on the building for the museum. This is an important step in just helping us plan for the future, so thank you.
Go ahead.
I wanted to thank the members of the community who showed up tonight, provided, especially those who provided input on the parks and such. It's very good, and also on the museum. We appreciate it very much. I know I do.
Thank you. Councilmember Cashman, Council President.
I understand. The city has many priorities right now, from the levee to the fire stations, everything related to public safety, all the stuff that's on our capital facilities plan. And I feel like sometimes those can tend to overshadow what's going on at the museum, and sometimes we're, we're, we can be a little bit of hindrance to moving that forward, being that we're a government institution and stuff. So what I would like to see is an analysis of the museum structure to be done by legal to see if collections and operations can be transferred to another organization to see what our options are. And I'd make a motion that that get referred to legal and a report back to council.
My second.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this motion. Any discussion?
So, just for clarification, how does that affect the museum board?
I think it'd be included in the analysis.
Because that's part of the Aberdeen Municipal Code, so.
Right.
There any other? Just Councilmember Shaw.
This sounds like something that was discussed in finance, and I feel like I'm not quite sure I'm fully informed on the what we're being asked to vote on, but it does occur to me that this council declined just such an opportunity before, when we were asked to look at outside organizations running the gateway. We decided that, you know, non, other organizations running our properties was not advisable. So I would just ask that if we approve this motion, that council be part of any report that comes back to us, that we be consulted as well, and it's not just done. Because there's been a lot of discussion about what we want to look like as a city when it comes to operating our assets.
I also have something to add.
Speak into your microphone, please.
I'm curious how that would affect any, would that dissolve the current museum foundation? Like, would it affect any endowments that are really all by the museum? Because I know that's part of the stipulation of some endowments, and the museum has ever dissolved or changed. The money would kind of, you know.
Endowments?
We don't, we don't have any.
No endowments?
No. No, it's just a study, or it's just a legal question we sent to legal on.
I think I understand his question. He's asking about our ownership of the collection. People who gave us all of their memorabilia and their other things, and this, this collection has a value. And probably we would need to be very mindful of to what extent would we transfer control of that, because I think the people in the community of Aberdeen are very proud that the city owns it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll send this to, this question to legal council. Anything else on the council comment period?
Mayor?
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes, I, I do think when things are discussed in, in committees, it's far better for things to come to us as committee reports than not just, you know, ad hoc like, but that's okay. I'm never opposed to getting information. And this is definitely something we should want to get. But honestly, I would, I, we got the gateway report. I hope everyone had a chance to read it. It was very, I would just like to say it was very well done. I especially appreciated pages nine and ten where the alternatives to the money that we are not using on the gateway, where there are options on how the steps going forward were presented. I hope everyone takes a few moments to read the report. But most importantly, the cover letter requested a meeting with the administration and our new city administrator and the mayor. And I really hope that we follow through and have a meeting with these consultants and take advantage of the knowledge they gained about our city and putting together this report. Because there's some really good suggestions in there that might help us save some money and find a path forward on the museum now that the gateways are on hold. It was really interesting to me.
See, thank you. Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. I was delighted to hear Ms. Croft's comments about having more walk, bike kinds of activities and, and having a, a marina. Apparently there used to be a marina over by the Walmart, between Walmart and the log pavilion. And I know public work submitted, or maybe it was Parks, but there was a grant application submitted that wasn't funded unfortunately to put, to put in a boat launch facility on the south side of the river. I wanted to share that the seaport has a, an active program that works with youth on, on giving them opportunities to learn about the maritime industry. And next year, there will be sailing classes available through the seaport. And they also have a training program so that youth or other folks who want to become an able-bodied seaman or sea person can get credentialed through the seaport. And there, that's a nice way to get into a very well-paying career. So there are things in the works and I think we, we put our heads together. We can come up with some other fun ways that engage the public and exercise year round. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none.
I move we recess into closed session.
For sixty minutes.
Do we have to give a time for closed session? Or we could just come back?
It's not executive, it's closed.
Closed session.
Yeah.
Is that different? We can do no time?
Probably I should give a time, so we think.
We, we think it's going to be about sixty minutes, but the.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made and seconded to recess to executive session, excuse me, to a closed session in approximately sixty minutes. Thank you. Any, any objections?
Yes. The other thing that we can do is we can adjourn to a closed session because we're not going to come back and take any action. There's no action to.
I'm good with that.
Okay. They do. I move we adjourn.
Okay, there's, motion was made seconded to adjourn. If there's no objections, we are adjourned.